The Clerk, please call the roll. Mayor Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Angel?
Here.
Commissioner Arbke?
Here.
Commissioner Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Peck?
Here.
Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance at a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we schedule the citizens' forum. This is where anyone from the public can come up and speak on anything not on today's agenda. Do we have anyone from the public? Anyone? If not, we have no awards and proclamations, so we'll move on to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing on the Adoption of the 2009-2013 Neighborhood Revitalization Plan. Subitem 5.1a, Resolution Number 096637, Adopting the Plan. Subitem 5.1b, Resolution Number 096638, Establishing Policies and Procedures for Adoption and Amendments to the Plan.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing. And Mr. Hobie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have before you this evening a public hearing for consideration of reauthorization of a neighborhood revitalization program. The area that you'll be considering this evening has expanded considerably from was in the last few years, and we appreciate the fact that the mayor has opened up a public hearing for public input for this area. The change in the plan that you'll see before you is mainly in the concern of the areas that are increased. We have doubled the area in commercial projects, and we've also tripled the area of availability for residential projects. We also have with us Dean Andrew here this evening, who will talk to you a little bit more about some of the improvements within the plan. So I'll turn it over to Dean.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This went back to 1996. We indicated it was the very first plan adoption. Salina was the first community in the state of Kansas to have a neighborhood revitalization program. It was renewed in five-year increments, and the last renewal was in January of '04. And the primary change at that time was to include the five vacant school buildings that were up for revitalization. And the other thing was to add buildings that are either National Register properties or properties that are on our local landmarks. So some examples of that would be properties like the Roosevelt Lincoln Schools, which are on the National Register of Historic Places. The Lee Building Warehouse, which was put on the National Register. Buildings like that would be eligible from that status. The Marymount Administration Building would be an example of a building that's a local landmark. So those were changes that were done in 2004. And then in 2009, the proposal was to expand the area to look at areas, particularly the north and south Broadway corridors as commercial core areas, and also to expand the residential area to include areas in southwest Salina, areas commonly referred to as the Indian Village area with south of Crawford, where we have some dated homes and homes in need of renovation as well as vacant lots. And so those were the geographical changes. And then we discussed with you in a steady session challenges we've had where projects are done in phases or merging. And before, the policy was rather vague, and we did our best to try to piece two together. And so this change clarifies that if you are doing projects in different years on the same piece of property, that they'll be treated independently and track on their own schedules instead of trying to merge two together. The other change had to do with fixing the rebate amount instead of having a calculated percentage each and every year of the rebate. So you'll start in year one, you'll know what your rebate's going to be, and that's going to remain the same, one through five, and then we'll adjust in years six through 10. But there were some challenges involved when you have the percentages of calculating it each year. And so those two items should help simplify the program. We've had distribution of this to the five local tax entities and as well as the Lee District Board of Directors. Although they're not a tax entity, they have been very interested in the program. And I think the Firestone Building and what was the old Montgomery Ward store would be examples of projects that probably wouldn't have happened without this program being in place. So we have gotten feedback that's positive from all the other taxing entities. We did have a request from Sling County that were concerned about the way beginning fair market values are established. And I think if you have questions about that particular concern, I might refer those to Mr. Bankston, who's had contact with the county councillor. But our recommendation, we take whatever public input you might get at this hearing. Again, all the taxing entities have had meetings and a chance to review it. And then there's a second resolution that's attached that spells out how changes might get addressed in the future and does call for any changes to be approved by all the participating taxing entities. So with that, I'd be happy to address any questions you have as to Sling County's particular concern. I said I'll defer that to Mr. Bankston.
The other question I think I had, and I think you might have answered it. So, for example, some of the older homes also, even though they're outside the scope, if they're on the, what did you call it, the historic register? Do they qualify?
If they're a landmark structure, an example of that would be the End Iron House that is at the end of iron, west end of iron. That's a local historic landmark. A building like that would be eligible regardless of whether it's in the district or not.
Or Mount Barbara? That was the other one that I figured out.
Those would be eligible as individual freestanding properties, and each of those is called out and listed in the plan. So example would be Bartlett School. That was redeveloped into offices. They are participants in the rebate program.
And you're asking for four years instead of an extension for five years, from '09 to '13? Or are you including?
Well, it would go to the end of '13, so it would be four and a half years, the same cycle that it's been on.
Okay.
We said because of some getting feedback and some updates on the comprehensive plan process, this would, cycle-wise, would have occurred in January or December. And because it's July at this point, we just tried to keep it on the same cycle. So it would end in December of the year 2013.
2013, okay. Any other questions of Mr. Andrew?
Is there any concerns over such a large area that the actual revitalization would be just endpoints here and there and really might not be infectious to a neighborhood?
Well, we've tried the targeted approach, and you can't say that it's, there have been some success stories in the downtown area, but you can't say that any neighborhood or district's been completely remade. But I think the primary concern was looking at Broadway and what could be done to help incentivize some improvements there. And it might occur incrementally over time, but I don't think we're going to remake the district overnight. But this is a tool that's there to help some of those properties on Broadway that need redeveloped.
I think I said it'd be a good idea on, especially on major streets like, say, Ninth. Does that extend both sides? I know the map kind of makes it look like it's on one side of the street.
The original downtown core stopped at Eighth Street. And so the original boundary for the downtown core area, or what's NRA 1A, was Eighth Street. And so the new expanded area runs down Pacific, over to Broadway, down Broadway, and down Broadway to Crawford. But we did not, the boundary did not move from Eighth Street over to Ninth. And part of that was that that is, Eighth Street is the boundary of the downtown improvement area, and that boundary was maintained.
And I might be looking at the map wrong, but let's say we're on Ohio Street.
Okay.
Is that just the west side of Ohio Street? Or would it be both sides? Similar question.
The area that is for the residential side is just the west side. But the, it is only the core, those core areas that are, I have the slash marks, the 1A and 2A, where a commercial project would be eligible. All the rest of the blue and green areas is residential only. But on Ohio, that would be the west side only, except for those two areas that are extended over to the east of Ohio, which is Woodland, Van Horn, and Prospect, and then streets in there that are north of the Green Lantern, Car Wash, Johnstown, Delaware, and just to the south of that on Stapler and Gypsum.
Dean, are those census tract based for all my purposes?
The boundaries of the residential area are based on census tracts and areas where we have more than 50% of the population that fits in the low and moderate income category. And if you use that, your boundaries are more defensible than moving those around. But they're based on our census tracts.
Any other questions?
Actually, when they come in for their building permit, what kind of help or information are we giving them so they can participate in this program?
Well, the, in the past, we used to give them a packet of information about the program. And then it changed from giving them a packet of information to giving them an actual application. And then what we're doing with that now is also referring them downstairs to Judy Irvin in Neighborhood Services so they can have a one-on-one meeting with her to understand the programs and the application process and what they need to do. The other aspect of that that has been challenging in the past is that many, many times on a project, the contractor will pick up the permit for the owner. And our goal is to get the information in the owner's hands. So sometimes we'll have to do a separate mailing to the owner because there have been times when the contractor's focused on the permit and the work and not about the benefits of the program. So then we've started doing direct mailing to the owners and encouraging them to come in and have a meeting with Judy Irvin so they can have it explained to them.
Thank you.
And there is no cost for that assistance? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Any other questions?
What was the issue on the valuation, the pre-evaluation determination?
The county councillor had expressed concern, and the Board of County Commissioners' approval of the plan was on the basis that we would assure that the process did not allow for the distortion of the increment, if you will, that could potentially occur as the base valuation is determined. And then, of course, there is a post-improvement valuation that is determined. If you had those established based upon the county appraisers' evaluation of the property, but could potentially have the intervening appeal of that base year's valuation, and let's say that did proceed up even to potentially a Court of Tax Appeals adjustment, if that was done after the increment had already been determined, and let's say that was reduced by some amount, you could have an artificial expansion of the increment, somewhat comparing apples and oranges as to the sources of the valuation. In a nutshell, we worked through all that last Friday, and we have prepared a draft administrative policy to be executed between the city and the county by Mr. Berburg, the county administrator and the city manager, that would simply make it clear that as persons apply for the program, we certainly didn't want them to be in a position of having to waive any of their rights as to their potential appeal of their valuation. So the plan anticipates that they would simply indicate whether or not they intended to further pursue any sort of local informal review of their assessed valuation or even potentially an appeal, so that we simply know not to make that final determination of the increment until those processes have been completed.
Any additional questions? No. Thank you, Mr. Andrew. If not, I'll open it up for public comment. Seeing that there is none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor, I'd move we approve Resolution Number 09-6637, Adopting the 2009-2013 Neighborhood Revitalization Plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 096637, Adopting a Neighborhood Revitalization Plan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Mayor, I'd also move that we approve Resolution Number 09-6638, Renewing the Existing Policies and Procedures for Readoption and Considering Future Changes to the Plan.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 09-6638, Establishing Policies and Procedures for Adoption and Amendments of the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, Approve the Minutes of June 15, 2009. Item 6.2, Resolution Number 096631, Authorizing Agreement with USD 305, Assigning Four Uniformed Law Enforcement Officers to Serve as School Resource Officers. Item 6.3, Resolution Number 096639, Authorizing Agreement with Travelers for the Renewal of a Comprehensive Property Casualty Insurance.
Does the Commissioner want to pull anything from the consent agenda? If not, I'll ask for motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I will second that.
All those in favor to approve the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
There is no development business, so we'll go on to administration.
Item 8.1, Second Reading Ordinance Number 0910504, Vacant portion of the street right away on the west side of Hagaman Avenue.
This ordinance was passed on first reading, June 15, and since that time, no comments have been received. Is there any public comment? If not, I'll ask for Commission action.
Mayor, I'd move we adopt ordinance number 09-10504 on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 0910504 on second reading. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel?
Aye.
Commissioner Arbke?
Aye.
Commissioner Jennings?
Aye.
Commissioner Peck?
Aye.
Mayor Larson?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 8.2, Resolution Number 096640, Authorizing the Submittal of an Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Application.
Ms. Tasker?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The city of Salina is eligible to receive a Direct Formula Grant in the amount of $201,700. It's a part of the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program. Eligible activities include retrofits of existing facilities to improve energy efficiency. The project we have proposed is replacing two of the existing fixed-speed centrifugal compressors at the wastewater treatment plant with new variable-speed, high-efficiency turbocompressors, which will increase the energy efficiency, reduce our energy costs, and reduce our carbon footprint. The estimated total project cost is $215,000, which would result in $13,300 being paid by the city. We estimate the energy cost savings to range from $25,000 to $45,000 per year over the life of the compressors, which is 20 years. Our current electric bill at the wastewater plant is roughly $170,000 per year, so it's a sizable savings. The payback of the total project cost is estimated to be approximately seven years based on a slight inflation of 6%, some being for treatment plant size and some for power costs. The cost to the city of $13,300 will be funded from cost savings in our capital improvement program. We have a budget allocation of $320,000 for wastewater treatment plant supervisory control and data acquisition system. That total cost will be reduced by at least $25,000 due to the variable frequency drives being supplied with the turbocompressors. Staff recommends that the city commission adopt Resolution Number 096640, Authorizing the City Manager to Submit the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant and Sign Related Grant Documents. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
And after that wonderful tour there last week, did we see these turbo, were there four?
Yes, there was four of them. Where it said, "Don't touch the pipe, it's hot," it was in the building next to there.
And we touched it just to check anyway?
Yes. That's that location.
So that's what that is?
That's correct.
Any questions on this, Tasker?
Yeah, I do. First of all, thanks for going out and grabbing some of that money that they're throwing out of Washington right now. Do we know these turbocompressors? Do we have a feel for their livelihood? I mean, are they pretty well in existence right now, and we can grab decent numbers? Or are they really kind of cutting edge?
They've been around for at least two years. I saw an installation in Chicago a couple of years ago that was using these type of turbocompressors. There's several manufacturers that produce those, so we feel pretty comfortable with the numbers that we're looking at.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Any public comment? If not, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 09-6640, Authorizing the City Manager to Submit the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant and Sign the Related Grant Documents.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 096640, Authorizing Submittal of an Energy Efficient and Conservation Block Grant Application. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 8.3, Resolution Number 096630, Setting forth the Advisability and Authorizing Water Improvements in the Schuler Edition.
Mr. Stack?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This improvement district is for a water line to serve the old Parsons School, which is a northeast corner of the city at Holmes and Country Club Road. The map on the very last page of this kind of shows the old Parsons School and the Holiday Resort Edition that is out there currently. This Schuler, Schuler, basically, Schuler Edition, but Schuler Company. Schuler Company, Charles Elsie has requested this be special assessed for the water line improvements, and that's what this resolution is asking for. It's around $75,000 is our estimate of cost. It's a one, one property improvement district and fairly standard water line improvement. So they've given us the petition, and we're asking for approval of this so we can move forward with construction. Any questions?
Questions of Mr. Stack? No, thank you. I'll open it up to public comment. Seeing that there is none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 096630, Advisability and Authorization Establishing the Special Assessment Improvement District and authorize staff to set the bid date for the project.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 096630, Setting forth the Advisability and Authorizing Water Improvements in the Schuler Edition. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 8.4, 2009 Asphalt Mill and Inlay Project Number 092753. Subitem 8.4a, Award of Contract for the Project. Subitem 8.4b, Approved Change Order Number One to Extend the Project.
Mr. Stack?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, again. This project is our annual mill and overlay, asphalt mill and overlay project. The streets are going to be State Street, Broadway, Cloud, and Crawford this year. Approximately one and a half miles of mill and overlay, two-inch milling and putting back asphalt. Our loan bidder, which is always APEC, actually gave us a fair bid, we believe, on this project. We've so far had two asphalt bids this year. One was around $71 a ton, and the other one was around 62. And this is at 65, or actually 67, so we feel like it's in the ballpark of what we've seen so far this year on asphalt prices. They were very interested in extending the contract. We were underneath our annual allotment for asphalt mill and overlay by about $200,000. So the bid came in fair, and we felt like, well, if we could get a little more work done, that would be helpful. And they agreed to, you know, as long as it's something that they'll consider. So we've already looked at a few streets to extend the contract. Cloud in the same area that we're milling, and Ninth Street both, there's a couple of really bad areas that we're looking at extending this contract. So we'll have to negotiate that with APEC, but their initial thoughts is that they'd be very open to that. They do not have a lot of work, and they're looking forward to working on this project. So our request would be to award the contract and then extend, basically with a change order, that staff can work, make sure we can work out those two new locations with them. If it doesn't work out, then we just can't do it. But at least it gives us the opportunity to not have to come back to you. We believe it's going to work out.
I'm just curious, to do 1.4 miles in those three months, do they ever do two of these at the same time, or how does that work? I mean, obviously, they can't be in six places at the same time. So do they do them one at a time, or do they ever look at two and do two or three of them at the same time?
Mike, as far as I know, they just usually have one. Do they just do one at a time?
Do they do one at a time?
Yeah, they have a milling crew and then an asphalt crew. They did say they were not as busy this year, so I don't know if they have other crews that they would put on this, but that's a good question. But these are kind of, our Broadway corridor and then Cloud Street are kind of connected, and then Crawford and State Street are not. So there is a possibility they could have two crews, but we don't know that yet. We haven't had our pre-construction meeting with them yet.
Has asphalt gone down since last year, or is this about?
Yes, it has, yeah. Yeah, that's very helpful. We were at $80 a ton last fall with Stone Creek. So Stone Creek was the first one to bid this year, and it was at $62 a ton. This is 67, so we feel like it hasn't gone up a lot. And gas has really increased quite a bit, but asphalt prices have not gone, you know, it was $1.50 not too long ago for gasoline, now it's $2.50. So they don't seem to have gone up that much. $5 a ton isn't really that much.
Okay.
Percentage-wise.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay.
I will open it up to public comment. If there is none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor, I move that we award the contract for the 2009 Asphalt Mill and Inlay Project Number 092753 to APEC, Kansas Inc., in the amount of $695,975.93.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to award the contract for the 2009 Asphalt Mill and Inlay Project Number 092753 to APEC. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
Mayor, I also move that we authorize a change order for $199,024.07 to extend this same project at the contract unit prices to complete additional asphalt work.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve change order number one to the project to APEC in the amount of $199,024.07. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 8.5, General Obligation Bonds 2009-a. Subitem 8.5a, Resolution Number 096641, Authorizing the offering of public sale of general obligation bonds. Subitem 8.5b, First first reading ordinance Number 09-10,505, authorizing the issuance and delivery of general obligation bonds.
Mr. Friends.
Mayor and commissioners, thank you. These two actions will, the next step in issuing the bonds this year, as you know, we issue bonds approximately one time per year, typically in midsummer. This year, we will not be issuing temporary notes at the same time. We simply don't have enough projects that are mature enough to do that. These bonds complete a number of projects, special assessment projects, including West Downman Drive, Eagle Crest Tent Twin Homes, Quail Meadows Subdivision Number Four, and Red Fox Edition. In addition, there's a number of general improvement projects included here. North Ohio Grade Separation, this is the refinances, the final temporary note that was issued for that project, and rolls it into long-term bonds. South 9th, Phase Four, the Energy Audit Project, which we initiated last December, the Aquatics Facility, which is the largest project on the list, and replacement of a ladder platform fire truck for the department to use. All the special assessment projects have been completed, final cost determined, and today is the last day for residents to choose to prepay their special assessments, so those are ready to go. Aquatics contract is letting, is under construction. South 9th Project is likewise let and nearly under construction anyway. I'm not sure if it's actually started yet or not, but it's very close. Total amount of bonds to be issued is listed at $25,320,000, subject to some final adjustments. Commission action is to pass both the resolution and to pass the ordinance on first reading. The ordinance will be, the final reading is scheduled for July 13. I lost my place there for a moment, and that would be at the same time as the bids on the bonds are considered. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions.
Questions of Mr. Friends.
One quick one. The pool is awarded at a little under $10.5 million. What makes the other $1.1 million of that?
The bonds include reimbursing us for the design contract to do the design and the implementation, engineering of the project, and that's what the difference is.
Any other questions? Thank you. I'll open it up to public comment. If there is none, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd move we adopt Resolution Number 09-6641, authorizing the offering for public sale of general obligation temporary notes and bonds.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 09-6641, authorizing the offering for public sale general obligation bond, Series 2009-a. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
Mayor, I'd also move we adopt Ordinance Number 09-10505 on first reading, authorizing the issuance and delivery of $25,320,000 in principal amount of general obligation internal improvement bond, Series 2009-a.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt on first reading, Ordinance Number 09-10505, authorizing the issuance and delivery to general obligation bond, Series 2009-a. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 8.6, discussion of any communications between the applicant and the governing body members outside the context of a regular meeting on which application CU 09-4 was considered.
Mr. Pinkston.
Thank you, mayor and commissioners. I can inform you that I've been advised of the withdrawal of the expression of concerns that prompted me to recommend that you place this matter on your agenda for today, and therefore, it would seem like any discussion of the, any matters pertaining to the specific application would be unnecessary. It did seem to raise potentially the question of whether you would like to discuss either today or at some future time, the potential significance of ex parte communications as you would be called upon from time to time to consider matters that are characterized as quasi-judicial, as opposed to legislative or administrative. And that, as I say, we could certainly discuss that today or at some other time if that is your preference.
Otherwise, do you need a motion for us to take this off the agenda?
That would be fine.
If we don't want to discuss this. Otherwise, we can just start discussing it.
Right, I think any discussion would best, as I say, be a generic one relating to those types of communications in general.
How this is handled and things in the future, right.
Rather than the specific matter.
Okay.
The only thing I think we do need to address is to make, ensure that the commission is given notice of an appeal to a planning commission decision pretty quickly after the appeal is filed, so that we have notice. We shouldn't be talking to the parties.
That's, that's a very good point, commissioner. In fact, staff has discussed, in the context of this matter, how, not only in relation to these types of appeals, but in rezoning matters, any of those matters that would fit within that quasi-judicial category of how to inform you from virtually the point of application, that these matters are coming forward and that they fit in that category.
Correct, because obviously, you see, you understand that we don't know unless you, unless the city staff lets us know. So, okay. So I guess that's all the discussion I meant, so what do we need to do with this item?
I'd move we remove item 8.6 from the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to remove item number 8.6 off of today's agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
May I move to recess into executive session for 10 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters and reconvene in this room at 4:48.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we recess into executive session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We're in executive session. Do you anticipate any action?
We do not.
Okay. We're in executive session.